The regular meeting of the Planning Commission is called to order at 7:02 PM. I do want to make a announcement. Tonight's the first time we're using computers for tallying votes and for communicating. So please bear with us while we go through this process. And I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Commissioner Langley. So please stand up, put your hand across your hearts, and face the flag. Can we have roll call, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Langley.
President.
Commissioner Sherman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Khan.
Yeah.
Chair Wright Scher.
Present.
And Commissioner Henderson is out with an excused absence.
We have the minutes of the regular meeting of June 17th, 2025. Do any commissioners have any corrections on the minutes? I will take that as no. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Langley. Do we have a second? Commissioner Con- Connor.
I second.
Start the vote, please.
Yes, vote has started. Has everybody voted?
I only see three of us.
There's, we're good.
Okay. Oh, gotcha. Okay, we're good.
Okay, everyone's voted, I'm gonna end the vote. Motion passes 3-0 with Chair Khan, I mean Vice Chair Khan, Chair Wright Scher, and Commissioner Langley voting yes, Commissioner Sherman abstaining, and Darrell Henderson out.
Okay. 4B, we have the minutes of the regular meeting of July 15th, 2025. Do any commissioners have any corrections on the minutes? No, okay, I will take that as a no. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Okay, Commissioner Conhan has...
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of July 15th, 2025.
I second. Okay, can we please have a vote?
Certainly. Vice Chair Khan? Oh, I'm sorry. I was going back to the old way. Voting has started.
Has everyone voted?
Yeah, has everyone voted? Take that as a yes and vote. Motion passes 3-0 with Chair Khan, Vice Chair Khan, Chair Wright Scher, and Commissioner Sherman voting yes. That's what screwed me up. So there's Commissioner Langley, Commissioner Langley abstaining. For some reason, it shows it twice up there.
Okay. Okay, staff, please read the oral communications and instructions.
This is a time where the public may address the Planning Commission on items that are not on the agenda but within the Planning Commission's jurisdiction. Comments should be limited to three minutes. Is anyone in the public wishing to speak to the Planning Commission at this time? No public speakers under oral communication.
Okay. Five. We will now move on to the public hearing items. 6A. Environmental Assessment 17-24, Conditional Use Permit 7-24, applicant Matthew Farah of West Side Collection Car Storage. Location 1608-1612 West 139th Street. Director, will you present the staff report, please?
I will be presenting the staff report for this item. Okay, and good evening commissioners. Again, as you stated, this is Environmental Assessment number 1724 and Conditional Use Permit number 724 for a request for a conditional use permit to allow the operations of private vehicle storage facilities within two existing industrial buildings totaling about 23,334 square feet located in the Gardena Industrial or M2 Zone in accordance with Gardena Municipal Code Section 1846.030.C9. And for environmental considerations, this project is categorically exempted from the provisions of CEQA pursuant to Class 1 for existing facilities and is not subject to the exemptions or exceptions in CEQA. And just to see here, this is a vicinity map. It is going to be at, as you stated, 1608 to 1612 West 169th Street, and it is going to be south of West 139th Street, west of Halldale Avenue, and east of Southwestern Avenue. And as far as the zoning map goes, the surrounding areas as well as the property is all going to be zoned as general industrial or M2, and the only other one is going to be the south adjacent property, which does have a housing overlay six on it. And just for show, this is the existing property. Again, these are four industrial complex buildings. However, the applicant is only utilizing the rear two. Just to show, this is the existing 1608 building. This is the 1612 building. And as far as the site plan goes, again, there's two industrial buildings. Both parcels together have a total of .9 acres in lot size. There are 35 parking spaces on the parcels, and there is a shade sale between the buildings. And once again, in blue is going to be 1608 building, and red is the 1612 building, as well as a shade sale in green between both buildings. And for the floor plan, there are going to be 19 total parked vehicles, and these include double lifts on the 45 bend pack lifts as well as being stored as 15 motorcycles with a car wash and detailing station. And just to show, this is the entrance to the building. This is only one size of a bend pack lift as well as the car wash station down on the southeast corner. And just to give an example, these are the bend pack lifts onsite. And just to note as well, the applicant is currently operating. However, they have submitted this conditional use permit in an effort to comply with the Gardena Municipal Code. And this is just a view of one lift, and it is double tiered, so there's one car below and one car above. And this is the car wash and detail station. And this is just another view of that. As far as the building in 1612 goes, there will be 48 total parked vehicles inside of the building with 24 bend pack lifts, 10 motorcycles, as well as an office and members lounge. Just to show as well, this is one bend pack lift, and then the area in blue is the office and members lounge. As far as the analyses go, the business operations include private valet vehicle parking, elevated storage lifts, car washing and detailing services, battery and tire changing services, and a battery tender for the stored vehicles. The hours of operation are going to be 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM all days of the week. And as far as the parking ratios go, the parking ratio of warehousing will be in effect for this use. There are, with the ratios of warehousing, a requirement of 31 parking spaces. However, the property is providing 35, so there is going to be four parking spaces in surplus of the requirement. And for public noticing, the city has publicly noticed Gardena Valley News as well as the property owners and occupants within 300 feet on July 31st, 2025. And to date, the staff has not received any comments made to the project. As far as staff recommendation goes, we recommend to conduct the public hearing, receive testimony from the public, and adopt Resolution PC 1225 and direct staff to file a notice of exemption. The applicant as well as staff is here for any questions the commission may have.
Okay, does anyone here have any questions? Well, I have one to... I will wait until the person speak, then I'll ask.
If the applicant wants to come to the podium to speak to the commission?
Excuse me, have to open up a public... The public hearing is now open. Now you, now you can come out.
First time, sorry. Thank you all for hearing me tonight. My name is Matt Farah. I'm the owner and founder of West Side Collector Car Storage. For 20 years, I have been a professional automotive journalist. I'm an editor at Road and Track Magazine. I have a large YouTube channel and a podcast, and I've been testing cars my entire life. I'm very passionate about cars, and I collect them myself. And I started this business as a way to turn one of my passions into a business. We opened our first facility in 2020 in Playa Vista, and we sold it out very quickly, within a year. And now we're expanding to Gardena, and our clients are incredibly excited about it. We're offering storage as a concierge service. So as Kevin very accurately described, we keep the cars on battery tenders. We start them up and warm them up once a month. We wash and detail them, and only them. We do not wash and detail cars from the outside, only the cars that we store. And we run our water for the wash bay through an underground interceptor, which we have serviced every year. You know, we're surrounded by businesses that are not particularly clean. There's an aluminum casting facility to the north. There's a junkyard to the west. There's a body shop to the east. We would actually be cleaning this property up from what it was in the past, which was an electroplating factory. And we're bringing high-end clientele to Gardena. Our customers have cars with us, but they live in Hermosa Beach. They live in Manhattan Beach. They live in El Segundo. And they come get their cars from us, and they eat in restaurants in Gardena. They buy gas in gas stations. They shop in stores. And they're bringing a high-end business to the area. I really believe in this business. I own both properties. I bought one and then the other right next to it. That's how much I'm committed to it, and I intend to be here for a very long time. And I look forward to answering any questions you people might have and to working with you guys for the next several decades. Thank you.
Is there anyone here that has any questions? Okay, Commissioner Can- Connor.
Yeah, I wonder if you have any client from Gardena?
I'm sure we do. I haven't looked at the addresses of every single one of our clientele, but I'm sure that we do, yeah.
I have a question. I saw that the cars that you have are, let's say, very high-end.
Sometimes, yes.
And do any of these operate on like electric battery type cars? Because the concern that I have, in case of a fire...
Sure.
Do you have anything set up to take care of that? Because through experience, when electrical cars catch fire...
Yes, it's bad, it's bad news.
It's bad news.
So we, you know, typically for most people, an electric car is a daily driver-type vehicle. And we store collector vehicles, weekend vehicles, stuff that's driven once in a while. So while we don't explicitly have a policy of not storing electric vehicles, the truth is, it's not something that's really in demand. Once in a while, if someone takes out their Porsche or their fun car for the weekend, they might leave their daily-driven electric car behind in that space. That's something we offer, a space is a space. But we don't make a habit of storing electric cars. The buildings are fully sprinkled, and when we plug in electric vehicles, you know, we keep the cars on battery tenders, normal 12-volt battery tenders. And when we do plug in the electric cars, we only use the OEM portable battery charge cable. We only plug them into a 110 outlet, not a high DC fast charging or anything like that. We set the charge limit of the vehicles at 65%, which is the optimum for storing them. We take all the steps one could reasonably take when parking an electric vehicle indoors. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions, anyone? Commissioner Con- Connor.
This question for the staff. Do we have any type of business car storage in Gardena?
Currently, there are no entitlements to have any sort of private vehicle storage facilities for a private collection. This would be the first one that I've seen for this type of entitlement. So again, it was previously a warehouse or industrial center, so this is a new type of use that's coming into the city from entitlement standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of approval? Okay. Commissioner Langley, please. Oh, can you go back, sir?
You can speak from there, but you probably won't get it recorded. Sorry, I couldn't do these things. I'm getting old. Have you considered a policy for electric vehicles in that sense? And the second question is, are you going to have guards there 24/7?
The buildings are incredible... I'll answer the second part first, if you don't mind. The buildings are incredibly fortified. They're concrete and rebar. We have heavily reinforced gates. I built an eight-feet concrete wall around the entire property with heavy iron gates. I don't believe that it is prudent to have those buildings staffed 24/7, and I have motion detector cameras all over the place that so far back up my opinion. And I think it would increase the price beyond what my customers are willing to pay. I would certainly consider it if I felt it was a necessary thing, but for the time, I don't believe that's the case. As for a policy of not storing EVs, my insurer is Hagerty. They insure collector vehicles specifically and businesses that deal in collector vehicles. And they are very comfortable with where we are. I have not considered a no EV policy. I am not personally that scared of it. I know that EV fires are very scary, but they are actually quite rare. And we don't, we don't have a high demand for storing EV vehicles. If my insurance company said, "Matt, the fires are trending in a way that we don't like, and we're going to need you to adopt a policy in order to keep your insurance of not doing it," I would certainly hear them out. But I probably wouldn't come to that conclusion on my own based on currently available data.
Thank you.
I will, if I may add, I will say that all, we have, our sprinklers are water, and our fire extinguishers are all CO2, which is better for any kind of car engine fire than a water extinguisher or a foam one. So we're, and we have Cintas engaged, I'm sure you guys know them, to professionally manage our fire extinguisher service, our sprinkler service, our regulation for testing, and on and on. So we're doing everything we can within reason, but until a law or my insurance says no more EVs, I'm inclined to not make a policy for that.
You're good, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else? Okay, I guess I can ask the question then. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of approval?
Sir?
Yes.
Can I read into the record that they were no public comments received for Item 6A? However, if any member of the public wish to speak on Item 6A, please step forward. No public speakers.
Okay, thank you. All right, I am now closing the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Would any of the commissioners like to speak before we make a motion? No? Okay, is there a motion? Okay, Commissioner Langley, we have a motion.
Yes, I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number PC 12-25 subject to the conditions of approval and direct staff to file a notice of exemption.
I second. Okay. Now, can we have a vote, please?
Yes, the vote has started. Has everyone voted?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0 with Chair, Vice Chair Khan, Chair Wright Scher, Commissioner Langley, and Commissioner Sherman voting yes. I do like to remind everyone that the decision will be final unless a written request for an appeal is filed with the appropriate fee. To the city clerk, within 10 calendar days from the date of adoption or city council calls this matter for review within the same 10-day period.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, the next item is...
Kevin?
Kevin? Yes, we'll let them clear the room before we go to the next item. Okay. All right, the next item is 6B, Environmental Assessment 7-25, Conditional Use Permit 2-25, applicant Vicki's Bubbly Cafe. Location is 14782 Crenshaw Boulevard. Director, who will present the staff report, please?
Tonight, I will be presenting the staff report. And so today, I will be presenting Agenda Number 6B, Conditional Use Permit Number 2-25, Environmental Assessment Number 7-25 for a request for a conditional use permit per Section 18.32.030, Section B of the Gardena Municipal Code to allow the onsite sale and consumption of beer and wine within a new restaurant located in this general commercial C3. The project is categorically exempted from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA pursuant to Guideline Section 15301, existing facilities, and 15300.2, not subject to the exemptions of the exemptions of CEQA. The project site is located at 14782 Crenshaw Boulevard, east of Crenshaw and between Marine Avenue and West 147th Street. The property site is Zone C3 General Commercial. And to the east of the project site, we have single-family residential zone R1. And to the north and south, we have commercial C3, as shown in the map. As shown before you, we have the site plan that the applicant submitted. And the new restaurant will be in the existing commercial strip known as the Crenshaw Plaza. And the applicant will not include any type of exterior improvements that will alter the existing building footprint nor exterior facade. The Crenshaw Plaza includes various commercial retails and businesses. The Crenshaw Plaza has one parking lot surrounding the shopping plaza that shares between the businesses. The parking lot is sited on the southeast and north of the building. The applicant provided a floor plan, and the project involves a modification to the existing floor plan to accommodate the new restaurants. There will be a total of 14 seats that will be accessible to the customer. And we can see the entrance and then the table on to the left side. For the analysis, so for restaurant use, it is a permitted use in the general commercial C3 zone. For a conditional use permit, it is required for the sales of alcohol beverage for on- and off-premises consumption. The applicant is required to apply for an alcohol beverage license type 42 for the onsite consumption in a public premises. Vicki's Bubbly's Cafe, hours of operations will be from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM. The project site is between the census tract 6035, and there's currently six businesses that have an alcohol license for onsite or off-site cell consumptions. And these businesses include two type 41 license, two type 47 license, and two type 21 license. The census tract is within the definition of an undue concentration area. Therefore, the applicant must seek a determination for a public convenience. Also, the Vicki Bubbly Cafe will be applying for a type 42 ABC license that would adversely affect the surrounding land uses and growth and development of the area. Also, Vicki's Bubbly's Cafe will bring a new business type within the city that will help revitalize the area that is full of vacancies. The public hearing notices were duly advertised in the Gardena Valley News and mailed to the owners and occupants within 300 feet of the project site on July 31st, 2025. No public comments regarding the project have been received. Staff recommendation is to conduct the public hearing, receive testimony from the public, and adopt Resolution Number PC 11-25, and to direct staff to file a notice of exemption. Staff is available for any questions as well as the applicant.
Chair, if I may speak?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify that...
Um, I just wanted to clarify that the public convenience and necessity is something that applicants would have to justify to ABC. It's not a finding that the city would have to make for restaurants. I just wanted to make that clarification for the record.
Thank you. Okay, do any commissioners have any questions? Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the approval? Is the applicant present? Please step forward. Okay, we are opening up, we have a public hearing at this point in time. Good evening.
My name is Dr. Prince Egeke Arinza. I am the one applying for the CPU. We're proposing to bring a, a kind of little niche ethnic restaurant. Nigerian, to be very specific. Uh, my wife has been in business for about fifteen years. But mostly she was doing catering, catering to events, weddings, adversaries. And we decided to make a little place so that most uh, people might have a nice place in evenings when they get off work. So that's why we, we decided to get into this business. We didn't know that it entails so much. But uh, we are ready to make it a nice place, a quiet place. Um, we don't want crowds, it's all inside. That's why we only have about fourteen, sixteen seats. Uh, a lot more people, when we do the food, they take out. They do the catering, which will go to the events. So it's only very few people, mostly, I would say weekends, that people come in, and it's for mature group, it's not for youngsters. So mostly family oriented um, set of people who come eat. Sometimes they drink, sometimes they won't drink because Nigerians like to drink at home. But we have to set up the bar just to give, just to give it a little phase of class. And that's what we're trying to do. And we hope to bring a lot of business to the city of Gardena, in particular in the place that is almost like junked up because some other business around that, they have a lot of traffic, they're not so pleasant. But we hope to bring a new color into the equation. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, any, now, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of approval? Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of approval? Okay. I am now closing.
Chair.
No, excuse me, yes.
Just wanted to note that we have no public comments for item six B. However, if any member of the public wishes to speak to on item six B, please step forward. No public comments at this time.
Okay. Uh, no questions here from the, okay. I am now closing the public hearing and thank you very much. Okay, is there a motion? Commissioner Khan?
Yes. I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution number PC eleven dash twenty-five, subject to the condition of approval and direct staff to file a notice of exemption.
Is there a second? I second. May we have a vote, please?
The vote has started. Has everyone voted?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero. Uh, Vice Chair Khan, Chair Wright Shore, Commissioner Langley and Commissioner Sherman voting yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, um, I almost forgot. I just wanna make clarification that the, this decision will be final unless a written request for an appeal is filed with the appropriate fee uh, to the city clerk within ten, ten calendar days from the date of adoption. Or if the city council calls this matter for review within the same ten day period.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, then the next item?
Agenda item.
The next agenda item is six C. Environmental Assessment two dash twenty-five, Site Plan Review one dash twenty-five, Tentative Parcel Map one dash twenty-five. The applicant is Mason Joe Jaji. And the location is one five nine zero three Brighton Avenue. Director, who will present the staff report?
I will be presenting a presentation on agenda item number six C, Environmental Assessment number two dash twenty-five, Site Plan Review number one dash twenty-five, and Tentative Parcel Map one dash twenty-five. For a request for approval of a environmental assessment site plan, number one dash twenty-five, and Tentative Parcel Map one dash twenty-five, Tentative Parcel Map number eighty-four five eighty-three, to allow for the construction of a multifamily residential condominium development consisting of three, three-story townhome units with one thousand six hundred and eighty-four square feet living area per unit and an exclusive of a five hundred and fifty square feet garage and a one hundred square feet deck on a seven thousand four hundred and five square feet lot in a medium-density multifamily residential in the R three zone in accordance with section eighteen point forty-four point zero one zero, section A, and chapter seventeen point zero eight of the Gardena Municipal Code. For the environmental considerations, the proposed project is being considered for a categorical exemption for the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to guideline section fifteen three zero three, class three, for new construction or conversions of small structures. And section fifteen three zero zero point two, not subject to the exceptions to the exemptions in CEQA. The project site is located at fifteen nine zero three Brighton Avenue, on the west side of Brighton Avenue and north of West one hundred and sixty-sixtieth Street. The project site is Zone R three and is adjacent to the R three properties to the northwest and south in an official zone to the east of the property. The applicant submitted a site plan as seen on the screen. To the left, it displays a single-family residence, which the project entails a demolition. On the right side of your screen, the proposed site will propose three-unit townhomes and a two-car garage. In addition, the proposed residential use is consistent with the number of parking spaces required by chapter eighteen point forty. Each unit will have a two-car garage, and then there will be two open guest parking. The applicant provided a rendering of the townhomes. And as shown in the rendering, the townhomes utilize a modern contemporary design with each unit showcasing a distinct proposed stucco color. And here is a image of the existing building on how it looks. It's a single-family, as seen on the screen. In accordance with the subdivision Mac, Map Act and chapter seventeen point zero eight of the Gardena Municipal Code and Tentative Parcel Map, it is required for the subdivision of four or fear lots for, or parcels. The Tentative Parcel Map allows a total of three multifamily residential units, each with its own parcel created with airspace rights. And here is the applicant's proposal for the Tentative Parcel Map that was submitted in the application as seen on the screen. The public hearing was, notice were duly advertised in the Gardena, Gardena Valley News and mailed to the owners and occupants within three hundred feet of the project site on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. No public comments regarding the project have been received. Staff recommends to conduct the public hearing, receive testimony from the public, and adopt resolution number PC ten dash twenty-five, approving environmental assessment number two dash twenty-five, Site Plan Review number one dash twenty-five, and Tentative Parcel Map one dash twenty-five, subject to the attached conditions of the approval and direct staff to file a notice of exemptions. Staff is available for any questions as well as the applicant tonight.
Do anyone, any commissioner here has anything, a question? Well, I have one.
Yes.
These units are for sale to individual owners that I'm assuming right now, not for rentals.
Correct. It's only for sale.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we'll now open the meeting for a public hearing. Is the applicant present?
He is present tonight.
Please step forward.
Evening. My name is Mason Zojaji, and my company name is Silvergate LLC. Uh, I had this company since nine, two thousand fourteen, but I worked before too. I work uh, as a, a single-family home in city of Rod, uh, South Rhode Island Beach, Hermosa Beach. And projects like this I've done in city of Landell, Lomita, and this Gardena. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. All right, now, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of approval? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to approval? Commissioner Khan?
I have a, I have a question. Uh, is it going to be only one entrance or you're gonna have two entrance?
Uh, there is gonna be only one entrance, which is from the driveway all the way.
Do you think the driveway is big enough for?
It's, it's wide enough, yes.
Any more questions? Okay. Somebody, yes. Uh, can you step forward? Yeah, let, yeah, let him speak. Okay. Uh, you will have three minutes to speak.
Commissioner, Chairman, Communist Member, Mason, nice to meet you. Uh, allow me to say something about uh, my new neighbor, Jason. I think you, you do a wonderful job to make the new construction. The only thing I have uh, minor uh, um, reminding and because you put a fence, temporary fence, currently uh, in front of your house, in your house, and I suppose it's a temporary, only during the construction. So when the project is finished, when the project is finished, when the project is finished, I suppose the fence, the green temporary fence will be removed. And but currently, I feel, because I use my visual inspection, maybe I'm not hundred percent correct. The boundary line seem to be crossed a little bit on my side. I'm the neighbor to Jason, my, my good neighbor, so sorry to, to speak this. So I'm not to offend you, but I just, so the current, uh, temporary fence is currently slightly crossed the boundary. Maybe there's, maybe there's some limitation of the fence, current fence. So the fence is not able to sit precisely on the boundary line. I'm not sure exactly the correct line or the boundary. So I'm, I'm, I would, I wish if you know the correct line, would you please help me? But there's nothing really, uh, and I just feel this is only temporary for the, as my new neighbor. I really wish the project's finish successfully, but only I raise my concern if you allow my humble opinion.
Yes, that's, that's, that's a good point that you brought up. And do you wish to address that? Then come up and address that.
Uh, yes, uh, those temporary uh, fences are just, like I said, temporary for the safetiness of the property. But we have so rare that they already done the job, so we have the monuments where they are located. So if this fence, like he said, may be a little bit this way or left to right, this is only temporary and is nothing official.
Okay, uh, do we have any method once constructions start to make sure that everything is in with the surveyor has done to, so that he feels safe once the buildings go up? Because once things go up, and if it's a little bit, and if it's a little bit on his property, that would be a much harder process to have it undone. So is there anything that can be done to make the neighbor feel at ease as the project goes up?
So he has um, stated on his plans he would be um, proposing vinyl fencing around the perimeter of his property, correct? So our recommendation is hiring a land surveyor for them to have something in document. And the applicant has done that already, correct?
Sure, of course.
So he has to comply with the land surveyor reports where the property lines begin. And so they have to comply with that and as well with the regulations for fencing, and which is also applicable in the plans that he submitted and we are approving as well tonight.
Okay, can you come back up, please? Does that, what she's just said, does, does that make you feel more comfortable as to when the project goes up? That they have, it has been survey, surveyed? And that the city is aware of what you have just stated tonight? And that everything will be done within what the surveyor has put in, which by the city is not encroaching on your property?
Yes, I feel, I feel uh, very comfortable about uh, this survey, I really appreciate. So you wouldn't, you will be on at the beginning of the project or is already, already done? And on the survey?
Well, the, well, the fence, from, from what I would understand, it's only there to keep vagrants
Oh, okay.
from getting onto the property. Because before you start a project, you have to put a fence around it.
Yes.
Because you don't want people tagging the home, vacant people coming. Because you don't want people tagging the home, uh, vacant people coming in because then that's another problem. If somebody comes in on the property, he has to go to court maybe sometimes to get rid of, of a vagrant. And so that's why the fence is up.
Okay.
Uh, but once the fence comes down, then it will be within the surveyors of the agreement with the city. But if you see something that's different, I do think you do have a remedy to come to the city and say they're not building within what the surveyor submitted to the city. So you do have that right and that option. But the way the city has taken care of this, from what I understand, is that they know the boundaries of the property and so everything is gonna be done that way. But right now with the fence is to keep vagrants out. So it's really to your benefit as well.
Yes, sir.
Because you don't want neighbors there that don't belong there at this point in time.
So the, the current green fence is, uh, is on the boundary? Am I, am I hearing?
No, it's, no, it's not the boundary that's gonna be permanent. No, it's just there, what he's explaining, it's only there now.
Okay.
To protect the property, to make sure that, that homeless people don't go into their property and set up house.
Yes, sir.
Because that would be a problem for you and as well as him. He will have to go to court to try and get them out before he starts. So, yes, go ahead, Chris.
Uh, if you feel that the green fence is on your property now, um, I'll, I'll go ahead and send a code offer, code enforcement officer out there to, to check it out. But if it, even if it's a construct, temporary construction fence, we need to ensure it's on your property and not a, another neighbor's. So if it's off a few inches, uh, we'll let you know. But did you say there were markers already done in the sidewalk, the little metal brass?
Yeah. I know it's there or not. Normally, uh, it exists, but I don't have.
Yeah. If you had it surveyed and there weren't, then the surveyor would punch them in. Uh, if they were already there, he would use those as, as, as markers. So, but, um, what I'll do is I'll send a code officer out there tomorrow morning.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, see, ensure that the fence is on, uh, your neighbor's property and if it's, uh, do you have an issue, we'll just let you know if you need to move it left or right, any.
Okay.
Okay. Do you know which fence you're talking about? Is it all of the fences or, are you to the north or south of?
I'm to the south of my neighbor.
Okay.
And, um, I think it's probably only a few, uh, maybe I'm wrong because I use my eye, I'm not sure it's correct. I just feel that way, but I maybe I'm wrong.
That's fine. Okay. Uh, if you could leave your name and number and, uh, we'll go ahead and contact you in the morning and.
Yes. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Kohan? Has a question?
Uh, my question, my question is, uh, when are you?
Yes, yes, please come.
Yes. When are you planning to start the construction and when are you planning to complete it?
As soon as the city allows me. I would have done it yesterday, but whenever, you know, the city gives us the permits, we
Uh, does anyone else have a question? Anyone out here opposing or approving? Yes.
Just wanted to note for the record that no additional comments were received for item six C.
Okay. I am now closing the public hearing. You may have a seat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would, in, once again, would any other commissioners like to speak? No? Okay. Okay. Commissioner Khan, please.
I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution number PC ten dash twenty-five, approving site plan review number one dash twenty-five and tentative parcel map number one dash twenty-five, subject to the attached condition of approval and directing staff to file a notice of exemption.
Commissioner Langley?
I second.
May we start the vote, please?
The vote has started.
Okay.
Has everyone voted? Motion passes three one, uh, with Vice Chair Khan, Chair Wright Shore and Commissioner Langley voting yes and Commissioner Sherman voting no. Again, I'd like to remind, uh, that this decision will be final unless a written request for an appeal is filed with the appropriate fee to the city clerk within ten calendar days, ten calendar days from the date of adoption, or if the city council calls this matter for review within the same ten day period.
Okay. Thank you. Stephen nine, Commissioner Langley, did you? I knew I was gonna say that. Oh, you made it. You made the second. Oh, gotcha. Okay. Commissioner Langley, you made a second. All right. Now, we're going to, um, other items, item number seven. No item seven. Okay. Now we're going to eight, Community Development Directors Report. May we have the director's report, please?
Is there a slide or is it just on my text? Oh, oh, I don't have it. Um, so coming up soon on Sunday, August twenty-four, starting at nine AM at Rowley Park, is the Big Annual Jazz Festival. I'm sure you're all familiar with that. And then after that, we have the city's ninety-fifth anniversary celebration. Uh, it'll be out on the front of City Hall lawn on Saturday, September thirteenth, and it's scheduled to go on between the hours of six and ten PM because there's going to be a large drone show. So instead of fireworks, that's a drone show and if you haven't seen one, they're pretty, pretty nice. And then lastly, we will have, uh, the famous, oop, next slide, uh, Food Wine and Brew, uh, which is Saturday, September twenty-seventh. That's also out in front of City Hall, combination of lawn and some parking space areas, uh, from twelve PM to seven PM. So I know you're all familiar with those events, um, but just as a reminder, they're coming up and that means we're coming to the end of summer too. That's all I have.
And just to note as well for the commissioners, if you wish to attend the Jazz Festival or Food Wine and Brew, you may have two tickets. Just please let staff know that you are interested as well as what email to send for those e-tickets.
Okay. Um, you, yes.
You mean you have two tickets for each event or one ticket?
Two tickets for each event. Um, I know that you do serve, uh, two tickets as you are a commissioner for, um, when, or you are a commissioner for both of them, but you can only have a maximum of two since you are an individual.
So you get two tickets for every event, whether you serve on one or five commissions, you'll get two tickets for each event. Two tickets, yeah, for Food Wine and Brew, correct? Tickets for two events. But you can't use four tickets at one event. You get two for each event, two for the Jazz Festival and two for the Food Wine and Brew.
All right. Now we will go to number nine. Uh, do any of the commissioners have any items to report? Yes, I do. I have, um, one to report for August fifth, the summer block party and back-to-school giveaway that was at City Hall Complex. That was a nice party. When I came in there, I was shocked, pleasantly surprised to see a taiko group performing and they were all female and they rocked. So I have to say that and, uh, I was happy to see that and that everyone, once again, had a great time. Commissioner Langley?
No report.
Commissioner Kohan?
For those commi, I mean, the commissioner, uh, who decided not to go to the events, if you have your ticket, you can pass it out to me.
I knew that was coming. Commissioner Sherman?
No report.
No report. All right. The Planning and Environmental Quality, Quality Commission will adjourn, adjourn to the next meeting at seven PM on Tuesday, September second, twenty twenty-five.